Good evening. Welcome to everyone to the July 9, 2012 Washego City Council Workshop Meeting. We call the meeting to order. Could we call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger.
President.
Councilmember Klinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenlee.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Schumaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Present.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public that would like to address council this evening?
I just have a very short little thing that I wrote up, mayor.
Okay. You bet Harvey if we can get your name and address.
Identify myself.
Please.
Harvey Olson, 3913 Yards Street. Last council meeting, I urged all of you, the six of you, to select a candidate who best represented the qualities that John Russell had brought to the council table. Then I sat to observe the candidates. Number one and both, and number two seemed very nice, knowledgeable. And then number three came up to the bat. Any other grand slam, in my opinion. So I got up and left thinking the only way he wouldn't get six votes would be if he dropped dead or somebody else had even more qualifications, which I really doubted. So the next day, it's Columbia printed the results, six for Mr. Boger on both ballots. Congratulations to the six council members and from many voters in my neighborhood, welcome Mr. Boger to the city council. I hope many good things will happen.
I hope it's like this for the rest of my time in the council.
Just breaking in early. Any other members of the public that wish to address council? Okay, seeing none, we'll go into our single item this evening, which is a presentation on our website relaunch. Trevor?
Thank you, Mayor Guard, council members. Tonight, we're going to be rolling out our website relaunch, which is scheduled to go live tomorrow, right at the end of business hours. We originally identified a revamp on the website in May of 2011 with a contract upgrade and a supplemental agreement with IT Pros Northwest. On the heels of that contract in May, we also had a public engagement campaign for strategic planning where we physically did walk and talk with business owners throughout the city, both the east and west side. A lot of the feedback we got from business owners and citizens were, in fact, that we needed to revamp our website. That was in conclusion of September. At that point, in huddling up with administration, we felt it was low-hanging fruit to go ahead and move forward with the relaunch effort and not wait for the strategic plan to come to full fruition. So from that point forward, we've been working with IT Pros Northwest. And at this point, I'd like to introduce the project management team, Rose Jewell and myself, as well as IT Pros Northwest, Kyle Ekins and Eric Brockman. From here, we'd like to just go ahead and start the click review, but prior to that, Kyle is going to give a brief overview from his perspective and go from there.
Thank you, Trevor, and thank you, council, for giving us just a moment. I wanted to take just a couple of minutes before this launch and paint for you a little bit of a picture of what it is that this website, in our opinion, represents for the city of Washego, a town that we live in and a town that we love. Now, I have personally been consulting or providing services to the city of Washego now for well over a decade. And I remember when our website was not much more than a glorified Yellow Pages ad. And the next iteration of our website and the designers that we used built a website for us that were nice, they were pretty, and they approved in their prettiness. And they were oftentimes what individuals at the city felt that they wanted the city to look like. This next iteration of this website is far more than that. What you now have is a fully functional, dynamic backend, a website that actually houses far more than just your most persistent contact surface to all of your constituency. It is also integrating functionality, services, information that will be heavily used by staff, and I believe making them much more efficient and give them the ability to communicate one with another, as well as meeting a lot of the needs that we saw in the walk and talk with the city. This amounts to a website that is well over 100 pages in depth. It is multiples of that in its ability to link, connect, and interact with partners, agencies, and those that the city works with and represents. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you and to say that I'm very excited. I have three children in this town. I've grown up here, it's my town. I bleed orange and black, if you will. And this website is one that is, as an executive for IT Pros, if I am in a training with Vancouver or Yakima or any of the cities that we often see, I can say, yeah, our website does that. Yeah, we have that capability. So tonight, as we click through the site, please, challenge us, ask us any questions you might have of a technical nature regarding the security of the site, the scalability of the site, the flexibility, even, there's no question too small or too technical. We have Eric Brockman over here, who is going to handle it if it gets really technical. But lastly, but certainly not least, I want to point out that simply auditing the content, the grammar, and the spelling of a project like this is massive. Rose and Trevor, you have taken on a massive project. They now know firsthand how big a project like this can be. And they really deserve a lot of credit for that. I think they work very, very hard, as has our programming team. And just, we have some questions tonight, and we're excited to take this page live and to see it take on a life of its own and to represent our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is our homepage, this is the splash screen. You're going to, people click into citywashego.us. We put right on the front page here as much information as we thought relevant for easy access. We start off with the mayor's blog right here. We want to go through and include it in our website and ensure it for citizens to be able to come through, give us their honest feedback, and tell us how much they do or don't like Starting tomorrow, when the site launches, you're going to have a, you're going to have a city newsletter that will be fully automated so that, or a mailing list, they'll be fully automated so that staff isn't sitting here at City Hall when something wants to be on or off the list, they can, they can, it will be an automated process. So it'll alleviate some administrative work. And then we'll go down, we go down the line, and any hot button items that need to be first and foremost on the website will be listed in the center column. So we start with the newsletter, and then the Cooper Bridge project, and then, you know, information about county utilities online. On the right here, you have a quick link menu. And from the old site, that was a long list of, an enormous list of things on there. And so what we've done is we've taken this and consolidated it down. And there are now collapsible menus to better present the, to get the information out to the public faster and more organized. And then on the front page, we have phone numbers. And if you scroll down, we have a list of city events that will be populating on the front page, and that will be more, that'll be a hierarchical method of presenting the data between fire department, police department, and the other departments that want to publish calendar events on the web. They will list it all here, list it all right here, upcoming events, they'll be, they'll be able to click into it and get more information about an event. So that will demonstrate that a little bit further than detail, we have like fire department. And we have the weather, so, weather was requested, we thought it was a nice feature.
How we have this homepage, what we're striving to do is make it both what are commonly referred to as sticky and dynamic. So your homepage, rather than a static picture, will change. That center column, your city staff has the ability to change that, so it won't always be pay your utility bills automatically. You can take whatever is the important message that needs to be delivered to the constituency hitting that website on a regular basis, and you can put it right in front of them. In addition, you'll see, of course, the mayor's blog uploading and other messages, the events listing, and the weather, those are things that just become really convenient. So eventually, I could see something like a kiosk sitting out here on the left. A kiosk sitting out here. And if you walk in, you can see what's happening throughout the city of Washego. And the navigation, both vertically at the top or horizontally at the top and vertically on the right-hand side, create what we call circular navigation. Now, what that means is that we'll have the ability to have a wide range of age, a wide range of users, from younger to older, have a more, have a more easy time finding what they're looking for. So there's not just, you have to find that one magic click to get to the information you're looking for. We have some circular navigation to direct them to those areas. So a lot of thought went into both the research that was done and the implementation of that navigation. Now, is there any other questions?
Yes, I did. You were saying that the center column is what will be changed frequently based, oh, sorry, what will be changed frequently based on what's new, what's the latest, and, you know, the information that we want to get out the quickest? Is that because people naturally navigate to like the middle of a page when they pull it up, or?
It is. Analytically, when people come to a page, they have a timed, what we call a page view. And through enormous amounts of study through marketing and advertising, we know where eyes tend to travel, both the navigation and for the location of information, where they naturally think something should be. That centerpiece is certainly one of those pieces of real estate.
Okay, and I have one more quick question regarding that. Will it always remain that color, that font, that sort of thing, or is that tweakable for, you know, to catch someone's attention as a highlight?
That's a great question. That's called a look and feel change. And these, the city is for the first time in the process of building a font and a type register, so you'll actually have a book that unifies what type of font do we use, you know, what's the size of the font that we use, the text, what pixelization are we using for pictures, constantly refining those pictures. Changing look and feel is possible, however, it is not something that is really dynamic or very easy to do. It ends up kind of being a scope of work and project in itself.
The reason being is, in the last website, one of the major complaints was, it's not more, it's not uniform. And so we went through, you would go onto the old site, and text would be similar, but it wouldn't be the same, and it detracted, we felt, in presentations. So we went through, and we're using style sheets, and we're using the rigid formatting, and we're actually unformatting a lot of stuff, so it fits in, so it's readable. So it doesn't detract. Over here, it looks funky, over here, it looks normal. So.
Follow-up question on that. If you go on airline websites and they have an area with weather problems or something, they have a banner on red saying flight cancellation alert or something like that, do we have the ability to put in like an emergency situation?
Absolutely. I think the mayor is one of the things he wants to do, now, I'm not going to speak for the mayor, but the idea that was, hold me is, using the website as a tool to get information out to the public quickly. There's a couple, there's a situation or two in the past that would have been nice if we'd be able to do that. And so we built that in.
Mike, could you put a banner of red on there?
Absolutely. So, you know, if that, that's built in, so. But it would, banner, emergency banner this week would look the same as emergency banner maybe two weeks from now, if that were the case. That's where we get with those standardized formatting.
It's also one of the reasons for the use of the city email newsletters, to be able to use that database, to be able to send out those emergency alerts as well, whether phone systems are down, we've got water outages, power outages, shootings going on.
Any more questions about the front page?
No.
I just noticed the new website survey is on there twice, down at the bottom, if you scroll down.
Yes, damn it, man. We were working on, that's an incomplete project, because the survey was going up at the same time as the website, and so we were getting that fixed. So it was, you talked to Russell about changing the background?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, we were just, we just wanted to get that out and get the ideas still being played with. We're going live tomorrow, this is a live tonight, so we gave ourselves a little bit extra time to get that just right.
Great.
So, do you have another question?
No, that's okay, I can wait, I'll hold it till later.
I'm going to move on to some of the sub-pages we have. Which one do you want me to start off with?
Yeah, Washego leadership.
Want me to start off by one?
Sure.
So, we got, we have different pages, this is the mayor's page, biography, picture. And we, these are, you know, we can add more to them. And so it's pretty quick and straight to the point. We have the city council page, that will have pictures. And it is sorted by position.
I wanted a different picture there. That's the picture six years old.
Give me a picture, I'll work on it. I did.
Hurry.
We've got it.
Okay. So these are sorted by position, they're not sorted alphabetically. And on the, on the right here, gives the contact information for each council person. And, and so how the public can easily get ahold of, or send a message to, not get ahold of, but send a message to you. And, and then there is, and you can click in, you can read more about the council person. So makes it easy for browsing, information about the council, council people, and how to get ahold of them. You then go in, this is a feature we've carried over, we list out all the dates and agendas right on the website. You can, you know, it's same as the old site where you could view the minute, you could actually view the minutes on YouTube and download the packets and agendas and get the minutes. So. So then, we'll start with, this is more of a department page, the city administration department with David Scott. And so we've, we've taken to the format of listing pictures on the side and giving who actually works in the department. And then administration's a little light on content at the moment, but all the, all the relevant articles for a department will go down the center, and we'll be able to list that out, and we'll show that here, second with like Public Works and stuff, who have lots of content. We have the boards, different boards and commissions. And that just goes and lists out all the, all the different boards. This is going to be one of the projects that we keep up to date with most relevant information for reference and checking. And we have a, we have a general contact list, just, you know, if somebody didn't find on the front page, they can click in here and find it for the city. Just, you know, it's just another way of being circular navigation to find the same information. I'm going to start in finance, I'll come back to community development. Finance is, has a fair amount of information. This was the first department we started with when we were building the website. We, so we gave the director information, a message from the department, followed by content that we want to display for, for the, our public. And, and then we have listed out here on the side here, we broke out, we broke out the navigation on the site so that we always have the quick links for the site. We determined that the quick links were important to maintain, just for a look and fill and enter. And then below that, each department has their own set of resources and services that they, that they have and provide. And so we've linked, we've linked here on the site to these different services and resources. So for finance, it makes sense that, you know, they can pay their bill or manage their business license. And if they want to look up for city forms, they can look up for city forms, and it would bring them into different forms that they can navigate to and find fast. So there are a ton of different forms on the website that we're constantly, we've been, we've been working to consolidate and figure out the proper use. Some, some forms on the old site were really old, some were very, very pertinent, so we're going through and organizing. And we're doing a more of a content audit at this point, rather than a run. And so that's what we've been working on for like a while. So.
That being said, there's two things I think you should come up with, finance. You mentioned the design. I'm excited for you to see this on your own PC, because certainly that projector on the screen doesn't quite do justice to, I think, the depth and clarity of both the hue and color, if that's your thing. I think it should look professional and just look nice. The other thing is the security of the page. I mean, you look at the finance section of a website, and you might come to mind, do we need the usual and standard procedures for the security of our information, data information, data interchange? And this page and the infrastructure that we host this page on, indeed it does. This page is hosted separately from all other data. It is in what you might refer to as a demilitarized zone, such that even information that were available, as that becomes appropriate, of a data or interchange nature with your partners, goes through a series of secure handshakes. So even if, I mean, it's on everybody's mind, what happens if someone hacks a website? What happens if they deface our website? City of Portland had this happen to the most recently, you may have caught that in the news. Just because the nature of hacking a website is for elite programmers to take the newest capabilities of software and find what we call an exploit, or an ability to get on your site and say, ha ha, we're smarter than you. And then the industry races to plug that exploit and to again make it secure. That gives, that does put us at some potential risk, and everyone who is on the internet at some risk for being defaced, but it does not ever put your information, whether that's out of your database information, your public works, and all the financial information that is hosted on other servers, even if there may be a port to access it through the internet, a series of securities to get to that information is much, much more difficult. You know, like, if the Chinese wanted, they probably could hack the city of Washego. We are hoping that they don't. And we're doing the best that we can to protect those things. I shouldn't have said that, but you know what I'm talking about. The amount of attacks that we get from overseas right now is considerable, and so, thanks to God.
So, you know, then I got attacked by the Chinese, that's, you know, that's, that little, little.
Counter-attack, yeah.
Yeah. What Kyle, what Kyle is referring to with the security is that our servers for each, for all of our financial data, they're hosted at various sites around the city. We have backups here, we have backups at police, our servers are secure here. This website is not hosted anywhere at these locations. Your city website is hosted offsite, completely unrelated facility. So if we were to display information there at this site where they've been hacked, and, you know, they're, they're not touching our servers here, they're not, they're not intruding here. So this is, since this is a gateway, a portal, we're not, we're not exposing any information that might be here. So, we'll talk about the hacking. Anyway, moving on, so we're going to go to the fire department. And so from, from a lot of, from a lot of this point out, it's formatted the same. Maybe we have some slideshows, because fire and I have police. Can I also slide show up? All the birds? Yep, okay. So, so we have the ability to use slideshows and actually emphasize what we do for our services and, and show cool things like buildings burning down, and the firemen can go light them on fire. And so we list out our, our fire staff here. And this is, this is where it gets into our calendar. This calendar down here, that calendar down there, it interfaces, that is just the fire events, and then like drill or, you know, volunteer stuff. And then that is actually propagated to the main city calendar, so you can see a good view of what is actually going on in the city. So, contact information. Any questions so far? Complaints, criticisms?
Are you going to show the city calendar?
Yes, we're going to, going to get into that and figure out how we're going to display that today, and Harvey tomorrow before we launch, and go from there. So.
Be easy. City last week, over. I think what councilwoman is going to show it tonight, and we're not, because that, that is a live, separate piece of a database, so there's functionality in this site that because it's not live, we can't show you. It's like the engine isn't running on some parts of that, it can only happen once we take it live, which is why we do it after hours, check all of that functionality, and then it propagates or becomes available to the public several hours later.
Another one of the features that will be live tonight is the mailing list, and we'll explain how that functions, because that will actually be a feature that we turn on when we launch this, just for the way it's installed. So, but that will be one of the, one of the, all items that we really want to emphasize is the better communication with the, you know, the constituents. So we have, we have fire, resources. So Jeanette has her section, she posts a lot of HR stuff on here, and we've made this better. We've made, made it easier for, for internal staff, even to, to go find and navigate stuff. So. If I'm browsing over anything, just looking. So, police. The police are actually going to run on here, give the live Amber Alert service as well, I believe. And that's going to be integrated with our site, so that we'll be able to get most updated information for Amber Alerts. They'll post on here. And, and they're, they're want, they're excited about using the website as well for better communication with the public. So. Was it, yeah?
Yeah.
So, we were, we're going to take that, and I believe what we're going to do is, we're going to go in and list out any alerts currently on the site. So that's, that's going to be a little bit of phase two, but that's coming. And it goes, plays the point that where, when we launch tomorrow, it's not done. When we launch, we are still continuing maintaining, upgrading, and improving functionality on the site, so, so that, so this doesn't become a static piece of content, like other sites. Public Works is actually very. We have Public Works, which, you know, is very, if you're just looking at Public Works, we separated out the individual departments of Public Works, it's a little there, we need to work on filling in some content here. We have forums and contact information, we could probably stand to expand some of that contact information down the front. But once you get into Public Works, you can go into like, you can go into facilities and actually see information about what the individual departments do. And so, and break it down. And so if we want, if a person wanted information on a, for a map for the cemetery, you know, it's not a search 27 feet deep, it's on a hierarchical view, it's like a. It's like, oh, I want Public Works, the cemetery. And, um, and they can search for it right there. But we're trying very hard to get a circular navigation. What is going to come in the next phases of this too is an A to Z directory so that we can, so that if you know what you're looking for, you can hit a control F for find or, you know, in your browser just type in, I want, uh, finance forums or I want cemetery or I want whatever, and it'll just list out. So that'll be another way we navigate the site and, and continue to, continue to make information more accessible. Um, one of the things that, one of the portions of the site I kinda like is parks. We go through and we list out a lot of the, the Washougal parks and, um, for example, you know, we have pictures and, and so we're, we're working on a little bit of the formatting. Still going through as far as the, the ongoing content that we had, but we do go through and Suzanne has put a lot of time and effort into providing us the appropriate content and, and getting it so that people know that, you know, we have, we have the different parks. To be quite honest, I use this because I'm a four-year-old and we like to go to parks. So.
Councilman Lindsay, did I see your hand go up?
Joyce. Did you have a question?
What did I?
Did you have a question?
No.
Yeah. So, so there's, there's a lot of different content inside Public Works. And then, and we have the strategic planning section. And we're, we still have some coming soon information. And then we'll go to community development. And inside community development, we have art building and planning divisions. And that is, that is sorted out with the appropriate information as well. And that's why we're in the A to Z directory because I might think, I might be a person that uses a menu system or somebody else might just, you know, it, they don't, they don't work that way. And, and some of this information can be two or three layers deep. So we determined after we get the content on there we launch, we know we've launched with, we're gonna start maintaining the directory. So that should be coming shortly after we launch. For each department, there's select staff lists listed out there and contact information, you know, and then we try, try to maintain the footer in a, in a semi, um, uniform, uniform.
Consistent.
Uh, system so that, you know, you can always know if you're looking for community development, uh, information. If you're always looking for the calendar, the police put their, their badge down here. So I just, you know, it was a way to make it a little bit less formal, more, more customized. So. Any questions so far? Am I boring everybody today?
No.
So, um, we're going to have a business development. We're gonna have various links is what I really should say then, for, for different things that we do. Business development is, is gonna be one of the, one of the places we focus next and how we propagate that stuff out, what we put there. We have a public safety, so this just links back to animal, animal, animal control, code enforcement, police and fire. So it's, you know, so instead of having the big duty departments, people can find it that way. Um, and the community is, uh, we've, we've circular, we've, we've listed out the parks here, um, just different menus. We've gone to history Washougal. We carried some of this over from the old website because we thought it was pretty good. Um, gives, you know, some information. And then e-government, it, this will be, um, this will be municipal, so this will take you out of the site to the, the NSRC, MRSRC. And then city forums, city forums will be, there'll be a lot. There's a lot of city forums on here. We're working on a better way to present this, but for getting the, the website launched, this, the survey needs of, of getting information present and then we'll respond. So.
I think that, you know, one of the things we heard really loudly from, from our surveys of the city which have made this a challenge is, we were told, we want a lot more information. We want to be able to find what we want on the website. We want to find it easy and fast. And we want the webpage to be simple and reflect the beauty of our community. That, the, some of those are, are pretty tough to put together.
Contradicting.
Yeah, when you, when you get that much information and you still want to reflect the simplicity and beauty of the community, but provide the information and make it easy for a wide group of people to find that information. So I think it's really what Eric's trying to display is, is how much effort and which tools we have used to try and meet those requests.
Paul? Pull down business development. Click on starting or choose starting a new business. It, it just popped into my head when, first time we went through and we looked at a list of city forums, that, that's all organized by department. And if I've just come to town to start a new business, I frankly don't know the difference between public works and community development.
Right.
And so I was thinking especially for that, that you can build an alternate tree, if you will, that includes those forums that a new business might want to look at.
Starting a business in four simple steps. They'll have this one, this one, this one.
Right. And, and of course along with that, there, there needs to be a, a pointer to, um, actually LNI, Labor and Industries for the state of Washington because they are the kind of one-stop shopping for the, for the state registry of revenue and all of that other stuff.
And that, that, um.
That might be a good segue to talk a little bit about phase two. Is that appropriate? Phase two, we've identified internally, not so much that we're broadcasting this because we want the community to see that we are implementing what we call SIM or constant improvement model, that the website is dynamic and it's changing and, and we're respecting their requests to, to meet their needs. But in this major upgrade, we've broken it into two phases. In that second phase, there's some considerable functionality that speaks directly to the suggestion you just made. One of those is a, a repository of PDF forms that you can actually fill out online. It would be those forms, the application for a business license. You can fill it out, choose to email it or print it or walk it in or, so a lot of that functionality, backend and support, it rolls out in a phase two and so.
Yeah, I, my, my actual thought was that, you know, for someone who knows the, the departmental structure of the city, this organization makes sense. But for someone who doesn't know the organization chart of the city, this is a maze.
That's, that, this is a, this is, I'm gonna say this is a verbatim statement that David and Scott said, was that if you know the organizational structure, that's what this is displaying. And that's where we get into with like D to Z directory, going through and refining some of, uh, some of these forms and actually having information of how, you know, more of how-tos, what-to-dos rather than, there's a whole bunch of information.
Yeah, perfect. I mean, yeah, and, and phase two is certainly a time to do that in terms of, you start to think about who are my customers and what do they want as opposed to what departments do I have? And then the second thing, if you pull down business development again, uh, posting your business, what's that?
So this is, um, this feeds into.
Oh, perfect.
Local businesses. So, and just, you know, it very, very straight to the point, not, not real advertising, but just, just this is a business directory. So.
Excellent.
Is that made up of anyone that has a business license?
It's not by default, but if you have a business license, you, in the city of Washougal, you can request to have your business put on here.
Does it say that, that you need to request it?
Actually it does. If you click on.
Your business needs to be located in, you must have a current city of Washougal business license.
It doesn't, that doesn't say you have to ask for it though, does it?
Well, but the, the title of the section is list your business on the city website. That may not be absolutely clear, but.
We can make that clear. We're not gonna be able to read people's minds on this stuff, so.
First sentence is, would you like to have your business listed on the city of Washougal website? To list your business, we need the following information, so.
And.
We certainly are, we have, there's a way we can communicate that more clearly.
And the other thing is at one point years, several years ago, we actually had what I call a roll of, of those businesses where you would have a logo and the name and the address and then it would, it was a slideshow.
We.
Just another possibility.
Um, to be, you know, uh, we could do that. I'll just say that. Um, I, my focus hasn't been specifically in this page.
Right.
We took this content from the old site and put it here because we identified business development as phase two. So, um, because we were bringing that content over and we wanted to, we wanted to draw as much information as we can. And so we're, we were bringing a lot of that over and this is definitely gonna be improved upon. We want to get a control in there, like a slideshow.
Mm-hmm.
And, and just rotate it at the top. That'd be more than doable. It's just a matter of identifying what, what the city needs are.
Mm-hmm.
And then, and then we're bound by some rigors that we need to be mindful of.
Right.
The city is not in the business of marketing or advertising on behalf of its citizens.
Right.
We want them to succeed. We want this to be a resource for them. We, we would love to promote them, but we have to be careful at how we can do that. Once we get into motion video or any type of even accidental preference, you end up with their feelings. What is consistent among most municipal websites is a static list of that registry and, and then alphabetically. So you don't say, well, how come my business didn't come up first? So we, we do have some of those considerations as well.
Well, again, that's, in, in organizing it, I, I understand the, the legal problems and limitations. But to go from Best Western to Bymark to, I can't see what the, the next, if I don't already know the business's name, I'm screwed.
Right. And that, that is where, again, the circular navigation, the ability to search by name and then by subject will help a whole bunch.
Yeah, so, so some broad, broad classifications of those so that I know if I'm.
Hotel.
If, if I'm looking under counseling services, I know where to look.
Joyce?
Well, I just wanted to comment, I don't think that micromanaging is necessary, but this is the most efficient way is to peruse a list. It's just to be able to go down it, like, and, and if you're looking, you don't want to wait for the picture to come up. I mean, this is, this to me is the efficient way to do it.
I definitely think there's a couple of different ways to display the information. So we could, we could have, you know, the, the menus, the menus here aren't set at four items, right? We could put five or 10 items in there. We could have a business list. We could have a business category in this. We could, you know, there's, there's a couple of different things that we could do in there. And then that way, whatever way you like browsing, you know, will be the way you choose. Sure, I may like to look at pretty pictures, so.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the thing that I think impresses me about the new design is that by, you can, you can have different logic trees depending on how you think, that you can display the same information in all kinds of different ways, uh, which is hard to think about if you're used to thinking in terms of paper. But yeah, the, the dynamic character of this and the ability to, to show information in all kinds of different ways, that's great.
Talked a little bit at the top of the agenda about constantly evolving and keeping updated, pertinent information. So specifically for business and development, we know that a website link or the creation of a website for campus of Washougal Economic Development Association will be forthcoming. So that becomes available, obviously it'll be to the dropdown menu for business development as well as a quick link. Other redundancies that will be built in so that they can access that specific website through the city of Washougal features. So.
Yeah, and, and that, that's actually displayed, like, we have other websites that we can display. We have agencies and organizations that we work with currently, you know. So we went to city of Washougal, you went to the school district website, you can actually just go, oh, I went to the wrong site, Washougal, city of, uh, Washougal, uh, I can tell, Washougal School District website, so.
Will you be managing the website? How often will the updates happen?
As soon as staff gives them to, gives us to, gives them to us. And we're going to be training staff, select staff on updating the website so that if there's something that has been on there right now because of whatever, it can happen. We're gonna be managing the mailing lists. Staff will be managing the mailing list, so that's going to be able to be done by them. They won't require, uh, go check down the IT guy and, you know, get this on the website. It'll just be able to be done, so.
How quickly will our, um, YouTube of this, these meetings be available?
Uh, we're trying, uh, we're trying to get them up same week, you know, so.
So that's still the same? It's not a matter of just popping it in?
Yeah, what happens there is, you know, if it takes a second to explain the process, we record it on a DVD down there. Uh, we bring it back, we convert it on a PC, we, we crap off the beginning and ends. Um, so it's just the official meeting and then it gets uploaded. And it takes some time to encode those, so they're not giant, gigantic.
Giantic, it's the new version. I haven't heard that one.
It's huge and ginormous and it's gigantic, so.
I had to write that down.
But we compress it down a lot and there's a lot of computing that goes into that to do that. And then it's really convenient because on YouTube, we eliminate the, any, you know, because we used to get a lot of public requests for videos. And now it's just like, go to YouTube, it's right there.
Well, I personally use it because I wanna remember what something was said, you know? So that's something to me that's really important because we might talk about it in a workshop and I need that information before, you know, like yesterday.
Right.
So to get ready for the meeting. And there's been a few times where I've tortured Rose and, um, it just.
Yeah, and so it's just a matter of how fast we can get it up there, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thank you. And when is phase two?
Tomorrow.
Yeah? Phase two happens quickly, huh?
It starts tomorrow.
The launch is tomorrow, so I just.
The launch is tomorrow and then we anticipate a period of, I mean, we have, I mean, just sitting here tonight, for example, you saw the redundancy of the placeholder of, of click here for the survey. And when we, when we thought of circular navigation, that's not what we were thinking. So, and, and that's, you know, a, a group of, and we have been beating on this site. We have, I mean, one technician who spent 10 hours just clicking and going through the site every day. Times that by however many are enticed to come and challenge our, so we know there will be a window of, you spelled this wrong, hey, this doesn't look right on here, and we're gonna respond to that. Once all that stuff settles, we'll circle back, look at what we've done well and where we need to improve and then begin to look at the Gantt chart of these, the new functionality of phase two.
And to be quite honest, I think some edits were being made behind the scenes tonight because, you know, the calendar. So it's, it's still being updated. We're still working on, we're getting ready for launch tomorrow. So I think that was just, um, we were finding applications and modules. Cause this is a highly module, modularized website. Cause I think the weather is a whole different program that runs inside and, you know, just hold it down, it's a nice thing to have. Cause hopefully people will say this is their homepage maybe, you know, actually get, be more, more part of the community. And so we want to provide some, you know, this is Washougal. We can have the timeline that is.
Dave? Did you have a question? Other questions, comments?
What strikes me, and I've looked at a lot of government websites, how deep the staff gets profiled. A lot of city websites, like the one in the city I work for, Vancouver, you won't see their pictures, um, you know, staff, staff pictures over there. I think it's great. I think it puts a human face on Washougal and that's one thing I like about it.
Hopefully, um, same note, we don't get people coming in and just bombing Jennifer's email about, you know, utility bills. But yeah, we, we really wanted to.
I finally met you.
To say, oh, that's the finance director. I know that when I walked into the city, so.
That's good.
I think it's, I like it. And I live in Washougal, so it's like, this is, I want to make it better, so.
Did they all approve of being, uh, put up there like that, I wonder?
Yes. One of the, one of the items that came up from the get-go was we wanted to have a website that had a personal feel, that wasn't big, that had that hometown feel, and I think this website delivers that.
One of the other things, just to talk on that banner at the top, put the river in the background and, and the, the trees. in the background and the trees, that is going to be something that we work on to rotate maybe weekly, just to, you know, maybe display more parts of Washougal, different themes of Washougal, rather than, this is going to be the banner for the next two years.
Yeah, that's good, I was going to ask that.
So, and then the logo, the logo was, we kind of reworked some of the lettering in here just to make it look better, but this logo will stay, this search part will stay, but this picture right here will, behind, will rotate out. It'll have the same consistency, it'll just be a little bit different picture, so.
Really wanted to take the opportunity to utilize it as a tool as well, so if you click in the water, wastewater division inside the public works, it actually gives a schematic of the water system and the wastewater treatment plant, how does the water get delivered, how does it get treated before it's discharged to the Columbia River. There's a video in there that's around watersheds, it was not Washougal specific, it gives a lot, gives a lot more sense of the services that we provide, it gives a lot more context of what we're delivering on a daily basis. Yeah, just there's a video, there's also inside of water operations or use schematics that just show generally storage, residential, commercial, water service and wastewater treatment, it gives a short narrative of that as well.
Ginger?
A few mentions of our actual infrastructure, well dens, interstations, and stuff like that.
That video that you had up just a few minutes ago? Yeah, I see it there, at the top, it says share. Is that because it came from outside the city?
Yeah, YouTube.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a YouTube embedded video there, so they have an option to share.
Okay. Is there anywhere else on the website where you can share with Facebook or Twitter or?
Not yet. That's, um, what we were going to do, um, my last slide, my last.
Well, we'll have to shoot you later.
Social media.
Social media.
Um, I think we made the decision that we weren't going to interface necessarily with Facebook, but we were going to maintain in the future a Twitter feed, so that people could subscribe to the hashtag Washougal or whatever, and then when we post the job posting, it's on Twitter, um, you know, if we, if we post the new advocate spot or news piece, it's going to post right on Twitter, and then, you know, the papers can pick it up easier than.
It'll be a one-way push.
Yeah, it'll be a one-way push rather than a two-way commentary, because, um.
Social media is certainly the cutting edge right now, and there's some, there's some work sessions that are left to be done in Phase Two around how to implement why and what the return is, and so that's some of that.
We, we really had to, we really in this project had to identify what we could get done, the low-hanging fruit, and, and what, what would be really nice. Some of the really nice to haves got pushed into this phase, a lot of the would-be-nice-to-haves like, like social networking got pushed into Phase Two because there are questions to ask about how we actually want to implement that, and the security, and the, you know, for one, like filtering, you know, somebody comes along and wants to page the website, if we don't want them, just type it in anyway and stuff. So, we want to be mindful about how we were, were, need to filter stuff like that, so. And so, for, for now, we've taken, let's not do it, we'll, we'll get a good idea about how we take, take that stuff on, so.
Other questions? So, you're going to take this thing live tomorrow night, after close of business, so starting Wednesday morning, we should start checking it, looking at it on our own PCs, making notes.
Yeah, you can probably start checking it tomorrow afternoon, late today. And so, you go home, you can probably start browsing the site, dub, 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 City of Washougal, I U S. And so, if it's not up, refresh it, because the way internet works is that propagation, and so if we, when we hit live, because it's at a different, different spot, it might take some time for those records to propagate to your computer. So, but by Wednesday morning, all that should be taken care of.
I would, my suggestion would be for council or anybody in the public, if, if we didn't start that process likely until Wednesday. I know this has taken months to get to this point, literally months, and I know as soon as you guys take it live tomorrow, department heads, Trevor, Rose, are going to be all over this thing and trying to find everything they can and make sure the thing works, so let's give them an opportunity to get through it and kind of perfect it before you start going in on Wednesday, otherwise, and try and keep things concise as you get them back to staff in regards to anything that you see in there. I just don't want staff starting to answer 42 phone calls on something that they already know is there and they're trying to fix and go from there, so let's give a little time to get the bugs out once it goes live and, and start working from there.
That's a very appreciated consideration.
Okay?
Um, who's there? Thank you very much.
We'll talk tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're back to public comments. Anyone from the public that would like to address council? Richard?
Andrew Kambie, 37015, South East, City of Washougal. I like what I see here, actually, a couple of questions that came to mind, and one of the things that Joe had was, it's something that he questioned, I really think it is important for the videos to be on as quickly as they can be, and then there's some steps to take, and those things are, especially for someone that I'm able to attend a meeting and, you know, like, watch the videos, sometimes it's been a couple of months or so, and it was still on here, just about three months behind on some other video, and it's, I'm not sure why that's the case either.
Thank you, Richard. Any other comments for council?
Marilyn Tyrrell, 950G Street. If I may comment on this, one thing I would like to see is, when I'm going on the internet, pages frequently have the date on them, the latest updated date, and I think it's very important to know that the information I'm reading or the public will be reading is reasonably current. The other thing I want to say is that the city has gone to a great deal of expense to provide us with the E Street, which is now a very attractive entry into our town. You people were kind enough to come and help me clean a bunch of junk and other people, other people's junk away some weeks ago, and much appreciated. I would like to see some way of us ganging together and starting to assist some of the people on E Street or other streets who need some junk removal, painting, landscaping, et cetera, and I would be happy to participate in that. It would have a very nice community feeling to it.
It would, thank you, Marilyn. Anyone else wishing to comment, council? Martha?
Martha Martin, whoops, can you hear me now? I don't know if it's on. Martha Martin, senior addresses, Richard. This is wonderful, thank you for all the work. I know how to do this. Thank you very much. Just a couple of comments, I don't know why it struck me as I looked at the, I looked at the bottom of them, and I thought, yeah, but it's, here, it's important, and I know it's not our local, but I'm just curious, it balances really nicely at the bottom, and it's a view that we have, but it's not our mountain, so just, it just struck me as odd, and maybe that's kind of the issue that I just thought about it. The other is that I remember seeing something about licenses for the city, and I like, thank you for the classification idea, I think that's a great idea, people are going to look, they have those titles, classification, that's a great idea. The licensed business fees for the City of Washougal are $25 plus $9 for the fee because that goes through the state of Washington now to renew your license, so every year we pay 25 plus 9, so you know, I don't know if we need that or not, I was a little surprised when I got my free estate license, and I got a fee on top of it, $25. It's not, that's not affordable, I just didn't expect it, so that might be necessary to put that on, that information on there, and I won't know how that works when you have that going on and then you come in here and you have a lot of porn here, it's a little confusing, so just for your information, I know sometimes you don't get to hear all of these things, and once a business owner comes here and says, did you know? But the website's gorgeous, I appreciate the effort that's going in with us, it's wonderful to get that kind of information and be able to access it quickly. It still needs to be a small-town feel, but it's a challenge.
Thank you, Martha. Anyone else? Richard?
Andrew Kambie, again, Martha just reminded me of something, that, that my experience with the business license may not be the same as everyone else's, but I think that, that there's some unintended consequences the way, the way we currently, the city is having the state collect that. I've had my construction business with a Washougal zip code for nearly 30 years, but I'm not within the city, and due to the nature of my business, there have been years where I have no business in the city. So, it's been my practice to wait until I have a job within the city, then I come down here, pay my $25. Sometimes that's in January, sometimes it's not at all for certain years. In this case, I got a notice from the state sometime in November for a city business license. I'm not even interested right now, but when I was interested, I found that not only did I have to pay the $25 and a $9 fee for the state to deal with it, but I had to pay a $15 late fee. So, I, I, I know that's, that there's a couple of steps here that I don't think were intended when the city got into this, but it seems like it could be done differently. One thing that comes to mind for me, at least in my situation, is that this business that's not located in the city shouldn't necessarily have to have a city business license, Camus doesn't do it, so.
Yeah, and you're correct, Richard, you, the system is supposed to actually segregate by your actual address and inside the city limits, outside the city limits, so you do not need a city business license if you're not doing business within the city. That said, the city issues them on an annual basis, on a calendar basis. We've had the same thing happen on ours, and Jennifer's trying to go back through. It's not only, it's the result of two different things, one, us signing on to the Master Business License Program with the state, and then action by the state this last year to actually start forcing cities and municipalities to have them collect everything so that they could charge their $9 fees. It no longer was voluntary, it's going to mandatory, so the combination of those two has many municipalities that are kind of going in circles right now because we've, God, I want to say 300 and some odd businesses within the city, we're not large by any means, so it.
You still do have options, but Camus doesn't require a license for me to work within this.
Camus does require a license, Camus doesn't charge a fee for it.
No, they don't, they don't have a license.
Okay.
No license.
Okay. Anything else from anybody in the public? Okay.
I've got a couple of items for Mayor's report. Number one is just a public thanks to all of the city crews and certainly the public for being out on 4th of July, we had another absolutely gorgeous day. I think it was a wonderful event that, last year was fairly well-attended and fairly full down there at Marina Park. I think this year we came close to maxing out the, the edges of that park all the way around, so it was a, you know, from the comments that were given to me that evening, afternoon, evening, and in the days since, it sounds like everybody had a good time, so thank you for everybody that took part in that, and, and certainly thank you to the council for funding that again for the community. Second item that I have is some information for you regarding a summer festival. As many of you know, Pendleton is coming up on their centennial in Washougal this summer, and had started plans with the Heritage Museum to put together a celebration on August 3rd and 4th. Lions Club is also involved in the planning of that, the city has come into being involved in some of the planning of that and in assistance along those ways, so here's some information for you, we've got some for the media as well, on some of the activities that'll be taking place, and you should see more information coming out very, very soon. We've got another meeting this next Friday, this Friday. Any items from council members? Can I join?
I took my softball mitt out of, oh, whoa, I just lost the punchline. The mothballs, that's the word. We had a great time, didn't we, Rose? Are you walking normal yet, Mayor? We challenged, I don't know who challenged who, but we played baseball, or softball with Camus, against Camus, and yes, I hit the ball. Rose hit the ball, Mayor did a great indo over first base, we had a blast, so next year, y'all council people, come on. And city, come cheer us on.
It was a good evening.
We had a blast. Good food, too. And did we win or lose?
I think we won.
I think you're right. In our minds, we won.
I was told two things that have to happen next year is, one, we have to require proof of employment by the individuals that Camus stacks on their team.
Oh.
And, two, they don't get to start their lineup over every batting order, so. You didn't notice that?
Oh, I'm such a trusting person.
Every time they came up, the same person was a bat first, every single time.
Oh, that's cheating. I recall, or no, no, that would be, how do you call another, another game? What's that considered? Rematch? There we go, that's a good word.
Sometimes some of us just play the game of what's meant to be played, and other folks have to find those edges, I guess. In the end, though, score showed that we lost by one point at the very end, so.
We lost by one, and they were all.
At the very end, at the very end, the last inning.
And how old were those people that we played?
They were pretty young.
And they were youngsters.
Yeah.
We didn't, you didn't mention who made the last, got out last day there, did you?
Was it me?
No, it was me.
Oh.
You, you mentioned, you sort of emphasized at the end, at the end, yeah, I did it. It just fell that way, though.
Items from other council members? Brent?
I enjoyed very much the 4th of July event, it's very impressive, much more than I expected. Enjoyed seeing you there. Next week, I want to let you know that I may have to leave the council meeting a little early because I have to be in Vancouver on their coal train resolution, which I'm involved with, you know, we do our two hats, so that's one issue I think this council's concerned about as well. I look forward to getting my committee assignments, when your appointments committee gets together, I'd love to chat with you about that. Thanks.
Joyce?
Well, the other day I went into the senior center when they were having lunch, had my blood pressure taken, and talked to Wanda Nelson, and she said they would like the word to get out for more people to show up and have lunch over there. It's a great facility, and the lunch is good, and we, more people should be taking advantage of it.
So, we're all just invited to go have lunch with the seniors that, at the facility?
Yeah.
Why don't you name?
I'm a senior, I can go.
What, what age? What age is that for? Where is it located?
It's in, right here in the community.
Oh, oh, this one, yeah, yeah.
The Loews and Fishes is the ones that run it.
And what time is it?
Eleven thirty.
What day?
Okay.
Every day?
On Fridays, and they have it over at the Camus Community Center. So, it's Monday through Thursday here in Washougal, and then they have it over at Camus on Fridays.
Oh, great, good.
They were giving away Dave's Killer Bread. So, yeah.
Awesome.
It's nice.
Any other items from council?
I just wanted to make a quick comment about the appointments committee. We should definitely set a time to meet, and also if anyone wants to, you know, express an interest in the seats that were formerly held by Councilman Russell, if you need me to send out the list again, I can certainly do that.
Please.
Okay, great. I'll make sure that gets done.
Because wasn't it said that, is this the time that if people wanted to shift, would this be the time to do that?
Correct. I mean, we can do thing, it's simply, you know, with just simply filling the seats, or we can discuss completely rearranging the entire list. or we can discuss completely rearranging the entire list of representatives, so.
Why don't you send me the list also?
Right.
Just blanket that, thank you.
Like, Rose, you've got those prepared already, don't you? If you can kick those out to everybody, that'd be great.
Yes.
Any other items? Just so you know, Brent, I wish we could let you off next week if you're not here. I believe it is, again, another meeting where we have only a consent agenda of a couple of items, and that is it. But we haven't yet brought forward, we're, we're planning to bring forward until the 23rd of this month, the ordinances to allow for meetings to be canceled, so.
Oh, we didn't deal with that yet.
I will, if, if members would like, I can ask Attorney English to go ahead and take a look at that again and see if there is any discretion in eliminating a meeting.
Well, I can tell you, this happens, you know, it's with the public bodies I advise. And what I advise them to do is have someone show up, even a staff person show up, just announce the meeting is not going to take place for lack of a forum. For whatever reason, it's not taking place, and we'll see you next, next time.
I'll check in with Donna a second time. If you don't see anything, though, you'll get an agenda.
Okay.
It's going to be a very short agenda. Okay, with that, we're adjourned.
Right.
Jennifer?
As promised, here's.